Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 20th, 2022. It's 7 o'clock PM. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Connors.
Here.
Nauman.
Here.
Sexer.
Here.
Baden.
Here.
Webster.
Here.
All right, thank you all for being here. Now, if you could all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by an invocation given by Bettendorf Police Chaplain and Pastor of Hope Baptist Church Pastor Mark Cannon. So stay standing for the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor.
Good police as power heads.
Father, we come before you, and we're grateful for this season. We're grateful for how you've blessed this year, how you've blessed this city. I thank you for these that serve on this council, and how they give their time and their energies to the service of this community. And Father, I pray you'd bless tonight in the proceedings. Father, I think of these officers that are being honored tonight. I pray that your hand of guidance would be on them and protect our officers, watch over that agency, and thank you for them and for their service. And Father, I pray that you would be with Councilman, now Senator-elect Webster, as he takes on this new chapter in his service to our state now. I pray that you would guide and give him wisdom, and watch over him as he sees to the affairs in Des Moines and represents us there. Bless this evening, and bless the proceedings to come. And I pray these things in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I think it's going to take a lot more than divine intervention to help our 5th Ward Alderman Scott Webster and his trip to the State House. But for that, I'd like to welcome him to the center of the room at this point in time. We've got much to it. We'll put the stuff out here, and then we just talk about it. Perfect. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Scott Webster. This is his last City Council meeting, as he's been elected for the State Senate and District 47. So it's our honor and privilege to say thank you tonight to Mr. Webster for his service, to his family who's here, probably still in the back, and to send them home. We had a little exception for Scott, where everybody got to give you some heartfelt words in this more formal setting. We do have a couple of gifts for you. Is this part of the...
Yes.
It is.
We're doubling up. You're getting blessed, blessed. At the well-known clock. But we do have a gift for you that you can take to Des Moines, an appreciation of Scott Webster for his commitment and dedication to the citizens of Bettendorf as a member of the City Council representing the 5th Ward of the City of Bettendorf, Iowa, from 2014 to 2021. Scott Webster. Yeah. Congratulations. So we wish Scott well in his service to our community in Des Moines. As a State Senator, I know you've been up trying to get your feet wet already, so that's good. Hopefully, prior City Councilmember Gary Moore will help give you some guidance on at least where to eat, where to stay, and some of the fun stuff to do in Des Moines. But we really appreciate your service. We appreciate your friendship. We appreciate your leadership, and we hope that you bring that to Des Moines. We will be in touch, because we've got lots of things we want to do.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. You're right there.
And as a token of appreciation for your time serving the city, that's why. Switch me. You want me to open it?
Sure. You don't have to. It's up to you. It's the clock we give to every employee as they depart. Oh, yeah. Sorry, not every. Those that retire. Leave it to the mayor. Leave it to the mayor to be positive.
You're not one that keeps his face.
Yes, that's a clock I've seen also. I appreciate it. Thank you. It's been a fun eight years. It started actually 12 years ago, and I ran the first time and lost. So when I first got elected, I probably wasn't the first choice out of everybody, but I learned a lot. Me and Decker butted heads from day one, pretty much. I mean, day negative one, I wasn't even sworn in yet. He probably wasn't... Yeah, he probably wasn't my biggest fan. I probably wasn't his biggest fan. But I'll tell you, I'll leave, and Decker, I am your biggest fan. Councilmembers have all taught me a lot, staff members a ton. The one thing that took me not too many years to figure out, we can make all the best policy in the world, if there's not good implementers, it won't go right. So you guys, your staff below you, I give you all the credit for what we've done over the last eight years. We may make policy, but you guys and your staff are who get it done. So I'll never forget that. We may butt heads sometimes in those areas, but those staff get it done. Our police officers, our fire departments, Public Works, Library, Family Museum, Human Resources, that's a big one. Line M, Community Development, Public Works, everybody, they all get that stuff done. Administration, councilmembers will come and go, but these people are always there. So that's what you probably, when you first get elected, don't realize. So it's been fun. I've made friends, everybody up here, a lot of which I've known for a while, but they'll be friends forever. And I won't forget where I came from, because I think sometimes people do. So I learned a lot.
Community development doesn't work with you the most.
Yeah. He's hidden back there. I did miss one. And he's got two other departments back there, too. So it's bittersweet to leave. I don't... I'll miss the opportunities we had, that we got together and we learned at different conferences and stuff, because that was probably the most... Most areas where we learned the most, where we learned about each other and we get things done for the city. So don't stop doing that. I think that's a big part of what makes Bettendorf different than a lot of other towns. You know, we have lives that we talk to each other outside of council or outside of city business, and that's important. So I appreciate it. I'll miss every single one of you. And now I get to come back after session and stand at the mic at the back and yell at you guys about something. I don't know what it would be.
Time's up, Your Honor. Time's up.
But I'll have to come back and yell at you about something. But I appreciate it. I thank all of you guys, and please thank all your guys' staffs for me. That's big, and most of what makes us look good up here. So I appreciate it. Thank you. I figured you'd leave it there. I'd get to that. Thank you, sir. I don't want to mess up your mojo up there.
Oh, we got more awards. Chief Campbell, come on up.
Much more important people.
There's a clock just like that posted on eBay right here. Want to soon?
All right. So we have a great honor and privilege tonight to award some of our great police officers. And for those awards, I welcome our Chief of Police Keith Campbell. Thank you, Keith.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, Mayor, City Council, thanks for all the support. This is just, I think, a great way to end the year. You know, I am so blessed to work with the great, some of the greatest officers, men and women in law enforcement. You know, we... They make my job easy, and I can't thank them enough for what they do every day. They're taken for granted. I think we all take them for granted, but I will tell you that they are out there 24 hours a day, doing the hard stuff, serving our citizens, putting their lives at risk. So this is just an honor and privilege for me, and Chief, to be able to stand up here and represent these officers. This is what you're going to see tonight, what you're going to hear, is just a sample of the everyday acts that our officers are out there doing. But these particular acts that we're going to highlight tonight are special, and the Bettendorf Honors Committee, they were nominated by their own peers here on the department. It means a lot, too. So with that being said, I would like to have Officer Brian Hanson and Officer Dennis Tripp come on up here. We'll start with you guys. So tonight, on behalf of the Bettendorf Police Department Honors Committee and myself, both Officers, Officer Dennis Tripp and Officer Brian Hanson, are receiving the Honorable Service Award. And I'm going to go ahead and present it to both of them for a credible act in the line of duty which demonstrated initiative and accomplishment. On March 14th, 2022, at approximately 13:55 hours, Officers Dennis Tripp and Brian Hanson responded to a call on the I-74 eastbound span of the bridge, reference a male who had climbed over the protective railing and was preparing to jump into the Mississippi River. Officers Tripp and Hanson made contact with the male subject, who was suffering from mental health issues. Officer Tripp and Officer Hanson worked together as a team to speak to the male for almost one hour and establish a rapport with him. Officer Tripp's and Officer Hanson's calm demeanor helped the male relax and convinced him to climb back over the railing to safety. The male was then taken to a nearby health facility for evaluation and treatment. Due to the patience and empathy shown by Officers Tripp and Hanson, there was a positive outcome to this situation. Officer Tripp's and Officer Hanson's performance in the line of duty is in keeping with the finest traditions of the police profession and reflects great credit upon themselves, their shift, and the Bettendorf Police Department, presented on this 20th day of December 2022. Along with receiving the certificate for the Honorable Service Award, they also will receive a citation bar that, as an award, they can also have on their uniform. Congratulations.
Appreciate you.
Way to go, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Officer Lance Wildin, if you could please come forward.
Also tonight, on behalf of the Bettendorf Police Department Honors Committee and myself, we're awarding Officer Lance Wildin with the Honorable Service Award. This is for a credible act in line of duty which demonstrated initiative and accomplishment. On March 19th, 2022, at approximately 16:58 hours, Officer Lance Wildin responded to the Tangled Wood Restaurant for a report that a subject collapsed. While en route, dispatch advised that CPR had been started on the subject. Based on this information, Officer Wildin brought specific equipment with him into the restaurant, which saved precious time needed to assist the subject. Officer Wildin took immediate action and cleared the other patrons away from the subject. Officer Wildin then deployed the automatic, or AED, Automatic Electronic Diffusor, where it advised for a shock. Fire and medic personnel arrived on scene, and the subject was taken to the hospital. Fire personnel advised that the subject was pretty alert and looking good by the time they arrived at the hospital. Family of the subject also thanked Officer Wildin for his actions that day in helping save the life of their family member. Due to the quick actions of Officer Wildin, the outcome was a positive one. Officer Wildin's performance in the line of duty is in keeping with the finest traditions of the police profession and reflects great credit upon himself, his shift, and the Bettendorf Police Department, presented on this 20th day of December 2022. Congratulations, Officer Wildin. Along with the awards and certificate, you will also be getting a citation bar. I'm your opponent. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you, sir. You guys look short.
Officer Neil Chapman.
That's something, no matter what shift he works, every time we see each other, it's always "Good morning." He used to say that when he'd be getting off third shift, and now with him working shift, he always just says that to me. So it's always a side joke. So Officer Neil Chapman, also tonight, is going to be awarded the Honorable Service Award on behalf of the Bettendorf Honors Committee and myself. Officer Neil Chapman, for a credible act in the line of duty which demonstrated initiative and accomplishment. On June 23rd, 2022, at approximately 18:23 hours, Officer Neil Chapman responded to Leclerc Manufacturing for a report of a drug overdose. While en route, dispatch advised that the subject on scene was passed out in the bathroom, and there were needles on the ground. Based on this information, Officer Chapman brought specific equipment with him into the building, which saved time, which saved time needed to help the subject. Officer Chapman quickly assessed the situation and immediately administered one dose of Narcan to the subject. There was no response by the subject, so Officer Chapman immediately connected the AED to the subject. The AED advised no shock, and Officer Chapman started chest compressions. Within seconds, the subject came around and was up and talking. Due to his quick actions of Officer Chapman, the outcome was a positive one. Officer Chapman's performance in the line of duty is in keeping with the finest traditions of the police profession and reflects great credit upon himself, his shift in the Bettendorf Police Department, presented on this 20th day of December 2022. Congratulations. The others award the awards certificate and citation board. Congratulations. Sure. Can we have the others come on up real quick? We've got a big group picture. Ryan, Dennis, Smith. Yeah, bring your certificates up.
You want to orchestrate this, or do you want to get...
All guys in the back. Just saying. You've never been able to do that.
I was looking, and I was watching Decker talk to Neil, and you guys are exactly...
I love Neil. I love Neil. Usually they say short guys.
Some of you guys have to get back to work, so. More working, so thanks for coming.
There's cake in the back.
There's cake in the other room.
Great job, officers. Proud to have you aboard. Okay, public requests of counsel, Skip. This is the opportunity for the public to make a request of counsel on any issue that is not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing. Please limit your comments to two minutes. Please try not to be repetitive and refrain from outbursts like yelling and clapping. Please be respectful. We'd like to hear from you. It's public request of counsel, Skip. Would you like to talk? Right. I know it's your first time. We'll have you approach the podium in the back and state your name and address.
My name is AED.
Good evening. My name is Skip Oliver, and I live at 2738 State Street in Bettendorf. And I got some comments to make. Okay? Comment number one.
What are you waiting for us to tell you to speak? You've done this enough.
No. Decker, how long is that center going to be open down on... Down on, what's the name of that street?
The Community Center?
Yeah.
Probably for a couple of years.
Okay. Now, is that fitness center up there on the hill? Is that still open for the...
It is closed. It now is a property of the YMCA.
Okay. There's a few things that maybe I should bring to your attention. Over there on State Street, we have a magazine company for comic books and stuff, and they have a lot of traffic. Plus, they have the Road to Ruder uses that exit, and another company down there uses that exit. You think the city of Bettendorf possibly could put some gravel down, you know? You know, because it creates a hell of a mess down there.
On State Street? I know the businesses of which you speak, but... Behind them?
It's south of 28th or 27th Street, towards the old Tully Automotive. I'm not sure that's a city. I think that's a private drive, Skip. I don't think that's a city street, but we'll check and see if it is. But I'm pretty sure that that is a, it's like an alleyway into those businesses. But we'll check it.
Well, that'd be greatly appreciated. And you up here? I had your sign in my yard, remember?
Yes, you did. Thank you very much. Nice hat. Better work.
This is Chief. You're a wonderful job. You couldn't ask for a better man. That man is good. Matter of fact, that whole council's good.
Stop it some more. Stop it some more.
What is it you'd like counsel to do about that, Chief?
And I got, as far as that goes, I'd like to give to all these people up here, their recommendation for the well job they've done through the years. And that lady from the director of library, you've got a hell of a team there. They really, really like her. They like her a lot.
Well, we appreciate your comments tonight, Skip.
Now, the fire department, you get an awful lot of calls, don't you, down at the... Where do all them calls go to? Down to the... Down to the old Alcoa?
I've lost it. Lost all control.
All over town.
Do they all go down to the Alcoa?
No. They go all over town.
Man, they just whizzed by there like it was on fire, like...
Sometimes that's where they're headed.
Sometimes it is.
The fire department had to do a fire.
You all do a beautiful job.
Well, we appreciate seeing you, Skip. Thanks for coming down and spreading some holiday cheer.
This man here?
He's no good, or is he all right?
Yeah, Superman.
Looks like him. All right. Thanks, Skip.
I got a question for Skip before I leave.
Oh, boy. I have lost all control of this meeting.
How much are these guys paying you to come down here every week?
Anybody else wish to be heard on an item that's not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing? Please approach the podium in the back. We'd love to hear from you. All right, we'll close public request of counsel. Let's talk about our first public hearing. Jason, do you want to give us any information here? We've already been through some information on committee of the whole, and we're about ready to start our fun budget process.
I'm happy to summarize the public hearing.
Please do.
Thank you, Your Honor. As councils will aware, the city is planning to sell $13.28 million in general obligation bonds for essential corporate purposes, meaning that these bonds will be used to pay for important infrastructure projects identified in the CIP that will be carried out during construction year 2023. We anticipate the true cost of interest on these bonds to be 4.38% with 19-year maturities, just as we've always structured our bonds. Prior to issuing, the debt of public hearing must be held, which council is holding tonight. The sale date for the bonds is scheduled for January 17th, 2023, so that those proceeds might be received just in time for the 2023 construction season. As always, we will apply to Moody's and have a rating call with them on January 4th to have this issuance rated, and would expect to see a rating as strong or stronger than we've received in the past, which is AA2. Important to note, the cost of the bonds, the debt service going forward, is covered by the city's debt service levy as adopted in the 2022-23 budget and considered in the upcoming FY23-24 budget. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Jason before we get going? Councilmember Adams, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. If down the road, five years, 10 years, whatever, interest rates go, are these able to be redone?
Yes. Most of our bonds are callable, I believe, after 10 years.
Okay.
So we were always analyzing those opportunities. Obviously, the current market, there's not many that are ripe for refunding, but hopefully we see that in the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions for Mr. Shat, our Director of Finance? Okay. Michelle, did you, or did we, publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to say?
No, we didn't.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to the issuance of bonds for general corporate purpose to do our streets and sewers. Anybody wish to be heard? All right. Close the public hearing. Councilmember Nauman, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $13,500,000 in general obligation bonds for essential corporate purposes. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Any discussion on the resolution? All right, seeing none, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
We have unanimously passed the resolution, and we will put the money to good use. Councilmember Sexer, please, a first reading of an ordinance.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the first reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Section 6-1, 322, parenthetical A, parenthetical 2. Vehicles entering stop intersection by adding a stop sign intersection at 16th Street at Brown Street. I move approval of the ordinance at its second reading.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? All right, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
All right, we move to a trio of second reading rooms of ordinances. Councilmember Connors, you're up.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the second reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Section 6-1-322, parenthetical A, parenthetical 2. Vehicles entering stop intersection by adding a stop sign intersection on Heights Court/Middle Road and Lincoln Road. I move approval of the ordinance at its second reading.
Second. Any discussion on this second reading? All right, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
We have unanimously approved the second reading, though will be one more. Councilmember Webster.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a second reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Section 6-1-142G, parking restrictions, emergency snow removal cul-de-sacs by adding a no parking on the Orchard Drive and Ginger Creek Road. After snowfall accumulation of two inches or more, I move approval of the ordinance at its second reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? There's got to be a joke in here somewhere. Anything? Bueller? All right, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
As a party shot.
Connors.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously approved that second reading. We move to our last for Councilmember Brown, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the second reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Section 6-1-142, parking restrictions, emergency snow removal cul-de-sacs by adding no parking during certain times for snow removal at the 15th Street and 18th Street public parking lots. I move approval of this ordinance at its second reading.
Second. Any discussion here? All right, hearing none. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
We move to our consent agenda that was approved last evening. Is there anything... Is there anything there? Let's move to approve it, and you can talk about it. Can I please have a motion of approval? Second. All right, now, any discussion on the consent agenda?
Oh, come on, Skip.
All right, hearing none. Michelle, please, call a roll.
Webster?
Nay.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Comes in a pain in the ass and leaves. We move to our executive session pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one five sub one sub I for the purpose of discussing the performance evaluation of our city administrator. Mr. Plain, would you like us to enter an executive session to do that?
Yes, Your Honor.
All right. Last night, I am forgetting, we did not close. We just, we postponed and left open. So we can enter that executive session without a vote, although we did vote to postpone. So we are now going to enter that executive session, and for that, we'd ask that we all clear the room. Am I right, counselor? We don't have to?
That's correct, as long as.
We postponed until tonight.
The roll call was initially taken to go into it.
It was, then we roll called to get out, to postpone.
Yep.
Yes. I got you. Howard, you got the roll call seat?
I do. Okay, are we up and running in the back? It looks like we are. We're on. Okay, fantastic. All right, we have exited executive session. I spoke pretty well in that session. Councilmember Webster, do you have something for us?
I have a resolution approving, approving the salary increase of five percent to the city administrator wages effective July first, 2022. I move approval.
Who's second it? Connors?
Of the resolution.
All right. Baden?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
And your last vote as a Bettendorf City Councilperson, Councilmember Scott Webster from the Fifth Ward.
Aye.
What say you? Aye. Okay. All right, now I'd like to adjourn.
So moved.
Aye.
Sex.
We stand adjourned. Good work. Thank you all.